Herndon Town Council Public Hearing, January 9th, 2018.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I'll call the meeting to order and ask that you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Councilmember Olum called me this afternoon and is unable to be here this evening, so she will be absent. We do have several sets of minutes up for approval. I'll ask for separate motions. Is there a motion to approve the December 12th public hearing minutes?
So moved.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the January 2nd work session minutes?
So moved. I'll second it.
Is that your signature? Okay. Discussion on the motion.
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries as well. We have no presentations this evening, so we will move right into our comments portion. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments for us?
Nothing, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Davidson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, this time of season is budget season for the town of Herndon and for other jurisdictions. There's a lot going on this year budget-wise, so we're asking very much for citizen input. Please let us know what your priorities are, where we should put the emphasis, and how you believe some of the things happening either at the national level or at the state level might impact what we do, but we're asking for your input. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McKenna?
For right now, just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year and looking forward to 2018. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham?
You know that the holidays are over. I just want to remind everybody that hunger does not take a break in our neighborhood, and I want to call your attention to two local Herndon-based nonprofits that help our neighbors in need. The first one is called A Simple Gesture, and it's at simplegesture.org. They will deliver a green bag to your house, and every other month you have the option of putting out food on your front doorstep on a Saturday morning, and these wonderful volunteers will come by and pick it up and donate them to the -- distribute them to the local food banks where they go to rest in Herndon families. The other program is called The Red Bag, and it's Food for Neighbors. And this was started by a Herndon family who realized that high school and middle school students, both at Herndon Middle and Herndon High, when they went home over the weekends often did not have enough food to eat when the school cafeteria was closed. So the Red Bag program is also every other month. If you go to foodforneighbors.org, they'll deliver a red bag to your house, and every other month you have the option of putting in weekend food for middle -- Herndon Middle and Herndon High School students who often don't get enough to eat over the weekend. So I encourage you on its new year. If you are feeling charitable into the new year, please look at these two Herndon-based organizations to help our neighbors in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs?
Councilmember Davidson and I went to Richmond and Charlottesville this week to first to have a briefing on the financial situation of the state, which was very informative, and then to meet with newly-elected officials to chat about some of the things that you need to know if you're a newly-elected official, and we also got to meet some very interesting people from all over the state. So other than that, I just hope everybody had a great holiday, and I'll turn it over to --
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
No comments tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. I wanted to remind everyone that the town -- our town offices will be closed this coming Monday, January 15th, in observation of the Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. Visit the town's website for the refuse collection schedule and hours of operation at the community center and the golf course. I also wanted to mention something that I learned on Facebook last week about our Herndon Police Department. They are -- this was actually, I believe, a Fairfax County Public Schools video that was shared. It's called Project Hope Partnership with Hutchison Elementary School, which is just outside the town, but many of our children who live in the town attend the school. It's a program where the officers are going into the school and doing activities during the school day and in the evening to help get to know the children and make their -- the children and their families feel more comfortable with our police force, and I am just really thrilled that we're doing that kind of outreach in our community. Thank you, Chief. I gave her a lot of credit for it, and she said, "No, no, no. It's not me. It's our officers who really enjoy this and look for these kinds of opportunities." So if you get a chance, go on Fairfax County Public Schools and search Project Hope Partnership with Hutchison Elementary. I think you'll be really pleased with the -- it's about a two-minute video. This is the portion of the agenda for comments from the audience. This is the opportunity for anyone to come forward and speak on any item that's not listed as a public hearing item. You have up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. The green light will come on when you get started. When the red light comes on, please try to wrap up. And again, this is for items that are not listed as a public hearing item. So if you hear about the Old Drainsville Hunt Club parking, the utilities, or about the special exception on Sterling Road, you'll have an opportunity for that during the public hearing time. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on any other item? Okay. Town Manager, I'm trying to give the Town Manager time to sneak around. All right. Thank you very much. So that does bring us to our first public hearing, which is ordinance 18001 to amend Chapter 42 Motor Vehicles and Traffic to expand the Old Drainsville Hunt Club zone. I'll open the public hearing and enter into the record that comments have been received from citizens. They have been entered into the record, and the petition from the residents of Old Drainsville Hunt Club was entered at the September 26 public hearing. The Town Manager has stated that it remains operative for any additional adjustments to the zone, including this evening. So I will turn it over to Mr. Bill Ashton, the Town Manager, for the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If we can go back, take a trip down memory lane, just a few short months ago, we had Herndon High School going under construction. There's a trail that exists between Old Drainsville Hunt Club and Herndon High School, and with the limited amount of parking at the high school, we started seeing additional cars being parked in the Old Drainsville Hunt Club neighborhood. There were some illegal parking. We had reports of litter, increased speed, and so on and so forth. Based on this, in September 2017, you all adopted a residential parking permit zone to the limit of what we could based on the studies of what was happening and the conditions on the ground. So we went as far as we could under the ordinance, and we established a zone that I think included somewhere in the neighborhood of, I want to say, 90-some spaces or so, maybe 100 spaces, give or take. The signage went in November 2017, and we began actively enforcing it on December 1st, 2017. On December 2nd, or whatever Monday was right after we started actively enforcing, I immediately had staff back out on the ground studying the effects of the zone on Old Drainsville Hunt Club. And we started taking traffic counts, we started -- or parking counts. We started looking at whether or not these folks were residents of Drains -- Old Drainsville Hunt or not. Just to reorient you, this is the zone that you all established back in September that is currently enforced today. Certainly, when we got out there, the problem shifted from mainly Huntsman and some on Old Hunt Way to further down Old Hunt Way. We started seeing, again, the problems of illegal parking, litter, and the same issues we were having on Huntsman have shifted further down Old Hunt Way. To reacquaint you, the code requirements under Chapter 42 of the code have three elements to establishing a residential parking permit zone. You have to have a resident petition of 60% of the residents in the neighborhood desiring to have the zone established. The number of curbside spaces parked has to be 65% or greater. The total number of vehicles not registered in the neighborhood have to be 25% or greater. Based on the results of the staff study, as the mayor said at the outset, the resident petition was still operative. It was at 91.6% back in September. It still is today. The curbside parking spaces that we found were 65 to 70% was the condition we observed. We had approximately 50-some, roughly 50, 51 vehicles there. I went out, took additional counts on my own, and I found a high watermark of 53 vehicles in the area. When we ran license plates, we determined that 65 to 89% of those parked were from outside of Old Drainsville Hunt Club. So you have an opportunity to expand the zone. Again, to hit the curbside parking spaces of 65%, based on the 53 vehicles that I found at the high watermark, you can expand the zone another 82 spaces. That's as far as we can under the code tonight. So what we are proposing to do is to expand the zone to include the entire upper portion of Old Hunt Way, the lower portion of Old Hunt Way, all of Crest Drive, and Old Hunt Way down to about 24 spaces shy of what's left in the bottom in the cul-de-sac. I'm also proposing that I will administratively, if you see at the very top, up at Drainsville and Old Hunt Way's intersection, you see another notation. At that notation, I'm going to propose that I administratively no park because it's an ingress egress into the neighborhood. I'm going to park the entire north side adjacent to the Montessori School, and no park the south side down to the first house, to where the zone will begin. Okay? So that'll be administratively no park for ingress and egress.
And that's an additional to the 82?
That's an additional. That's not even -- that's above and beyond. That's something I can do under the code unilaterally. I can no park a zone based on conditions, and because we don't want cars parked right up into that area, you'd have a problem getting in and out of the neighborhood, we'll just administratively no park that. We will establish a zone all the way down until these areas you see here. Certainly, it's, again, imperfect. We have 24 remaining spaces at the bottom of Old Hunt Way. I had a very good conversation with Dr. Noto, the principal of Herndon High School, today. She and I, about 5:30, spent about 30 minutes on the phone together, and she has assured me that the gravel parking lot right now is staked. It is not permitted yet because they're -- they need to make some drainage improvements. The drainage improvements are forthcoming, and she anticipates having that parking lot in place very soon. She says, right now, based on some of the changes they made in parking, she's able to get 100% -- let me make sure I get her correct. 100%. She was able to accommodate everyone in the permanent parking lottery on site. Everybody in the temporary parking lottery, she's pretty sure she'll be able to accommodate once she gets onto the gravel lot, once the gravel lot gets in place. She wanted me to assure you that she wants to work with the town and wants to be a good neighbor. She, both of Old Drainsville Hunt and the King Street neighborhood in Fairfax County, she certainly doesn't want to have spill-over problems into those neighborhoods, and she's trying to accommodate not having that as much as she can. She's willing. She's supportive of this measure, and again, she's open to any other ideas we may have to help solve the problem. So with that, I will take your questions.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Ashton. Ms. Friedrichs?
One of the letters that we received from a citizen living in Old Hunt -- Old Drainsville Hunt asked whether or not it was legal to sell parking permits to the students. Can you address that?
I'm going to refer that to the town attorney, if you don't mind. I'm sorry, Lisa.
The concern is that neighbors are now -- they're being approached to sell their permit -- their stickers to allow students to use them, so.
That would be a violation of the code. The stickers are awarded pursuant to the code based upon residency in the zone, so unless they were selling them to someone else in the zone, and even that would be prohibited, but it would be easy to discern because of the location of their registration for the vehicle.
Thank you. Other questions? Nope. Ms. Baker?
So can you address the -- I know because of the code, we can only do so much, and I know there are citizens in the room, I'm sure, that are part of that last section that we can't mitigate. What are the plans for that? Because we certainly anticipate students will figure that out, right? And they will go there, and it is kind of that bottleneck end of the cul-de-sac, so we get that. Can you just speak to thoughts of how we can address that or when we can next address that?
Absolutely. Much like last time, day one after activation, the expanded zone, we will be back out there, and we will monitor it until we see the conditions are such till we come back here, probably in the spring. So this seems to be every season we visit this, and we'll be back to expand it and complete the neighborhood. Unfortunately, the code only allows us to do 60 -- up to 65%. If I'd have gone to, say, 83 spaces, we'd have dropped to 62%. It wouldn't have been pursuant to the code, and I couldn't recommend that to you. So we went as far as we maxim -- that we could on a maximum basis. Interesting thing that I did find in the data was that we went from 70 -- I wouldn't say 77 cars at the Phase 1, when we were in here talking Phase 1, and now we're down to 53 cars that are there. So we have trimmed off some cars in the process. I'm hoping some of the actions that Dr. Noto has taken at the school will trim off more cars, and hopefully it won't be nearly as bad. I know that one of the issues that I saw in one of the letters that came in was a major concern about speeding, especially because Dr. Noto assures me that, when I did bring that up to her, she said, "Wow, I guess my tardy policy is working, but not in the way I intended it to work." So at that point, I would encourage the chief to have folks out there in the mornings watching for those students to come down and can't find that 25th space, ripping on up there, and we take care of that.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham?
Lastly, I know that the high school situation is temporary, and that when the gravel lot is reopened, 100% of the permanent parkers -- permanent sticker parkers will be accommodated. And how many of the temporary -- the kids who have the temporary parking permits, about how many? She thinks she can get everybody back on campus is what it boils down to.
She thinks she can get all the temporary parking permit people back on campus in the gravel lot. The problem is that the permits themselves are $200.
So you have a lot of students who park without a permit, and that's what we're seeing flowing into the residential neighborhoods.
Yes. So that is also contributing to some of this problem, is students that the parents can't afford it, or choose not to spend it, or whatever, and the students are trying to find any way they can to park.
Okay. And what's the timing on that reopening of that lot?
She's -- all she could tell me at this point is that they have a -- they have drainage improvements that they have to complete, and then they can pull the permit to put the gravel down.
Okay. Thank you.
And she seems relatively confident it's fairly soon. She can't give me a timeframe.
Are those -- so they're working with the county for that drainage situation, correct?
Absolutely. It's outside of town. It's a county.
We'll add that to our list to ask supervisors fast about when we need them.
And a county permit as well, so it's not ours.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Other questions for staff? Nope. Everybody took my questions already. So thank you, guys. So there are no other questions. This is a public hearing, so we'll call for comments from the audience. We have up to three minutes. Once again, state your name and address for the record, and when the red light comes on, please try to wrap up.
Thank you. I'm Tom Tomaccio, resident 708 Huntsman Place, also secretary of the Homeowners Association Board. So as you know, you've got a communication from Rod Nerschel. He's unable to attend tonight, but he, I think, very forcefully stated his views and opinions, which I also share 100%, and I also speak for the board, who is 100% behind what he has stated in that email. So but overall, I would like to extend our deep appreciation to Bill Ashton, Town Manager, and also to the Town Council and the mayor for your tremendous help in this. I mean, we're very appreciative of this, and we've seen an order of magnitude improvement since the restrictions went in in early December. However, and we do still have a problem. It's kind of like jelly, and you're pushing the jelly down the tube, and it's just going to the point of least resistance. So it's still an issue, and we would hope that the council would vote for this, and that ultimately, we're going to need to have a total residential program to solve the problem. But again, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Come on down.
Hey, Ben Jennings, 658 Old Hunt. I'd like to reiterate my appreciation, and piggybacking on the last comment, I'd like to say that although we're pushing this down a tube, it's to a different part of the tube. This is a part of the neighborhood where we have the cul-de-sac, so we all congregate. This is where all the families are. There's a bunch of children. So it's an order of magnitude different in terms of safety than the rest of the street. So for me, I think if we made an exception to safety at Crest, this would be another good place to make an exception to eliminate parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come down? Yes, sir, followed by -- you guys can kind of line up if you like. It's all good.
Hi. My name is Richard Romero. I live at 678 Old Hunt Way, new resident to Herndon, and so I really appreciate you looking at this issue. While it is a nuisance, I don't think anybody will deny that. It's a nuisance for the neighborhood. I actually work from home during the day, and I actually face the front of my house, so I can see exactly what's going on in the neighborhood throughout the day, during the day. And I don't know if anybody's been down our neighborhood during the day, but there's quite often a common lot of cars backed up. There's delivery trucks. There's garbage trucks, and people live in the neighborhood trying to get to their home. My big concern is while it is a nuisance and while it is an eyesore to the neighborhood and all the other issues that are -- that was addressed, should a emergency services vehicle try to get to one of those homes, and if somebody's life was a matter of a few minutes, they're not going to survive. Because I can assure you that a fire truck, a police car, an ambulance is going to sit in traffic on that street for several minutes trying to get to a home and possibly save somebody's life, which could be a real issue. So that's my big concern, living there, seeing what's going on, and seeing the backup down that road because of all of the cars, all of the congestion. It really needs to be resolved, and it needs to be resolved permanently in some form or fashion. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening. John Claus, 663 Old Hunt Way. Thank you very much for all your work you're doing with this. I wanted to point out, actually, something that was just pointed out, but the congestion point is a problem, I think, down in cul-de-sac with EMS vehicles. The children at play. I wanted to make two points. One is a real concern that students looking for parking right before school starts, not finding it, we feel there's a real worry with them speeding right up the street trying to find it elsewhere. The second thing is I wanted to highlight the fact that from my house at 663, which is right before the cul-de-sac, you can still make it to Herndon in 10 minutes walking. My son did it all the time. You go behind, for instance, Craig's house, 664, you hit right across that little river there, you just hop across it, and you're at Huntsman, and you're right up. So even though we're all the way at the cul-de-sac and way down away from the high school, you're not that far. And that's what I wanted to point out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Yes, sir, followed by you, ma'am. Come on down.
Hi. Craig Wolf, 664 Old Hunt Way. I live across the street from the prior speaker, so I'd just like to echo the comments. And first, let me also extend our appreciation for what you've done so far. We are appreciative of that. I've been a resident in my house since 1989, so since the house was brand-new, and definitely the changes that have occurred recently aren't welcome. Just to add a little bit more color to a couple of the other commenters, we do even in advance of having the parking problem, get foot traffic coming up from the bike trail that also comes up into our neighborhood at the end of the cul-de-sac. They walk up the bike trail and literally right between me and the neighbor's house because you can easily, as John said, cross the creek, and then you're right on the connecting trail between Huntsman and the high school. So it's a shortcut a lot of people use. If people start parking down there, we'll have more traffic cutting across, trespassing across the property to do that. It is a very popular place for young children in the neighborhood to play in the cul-de-sac. It's not unusual for the neighbors to have, you know, cones out there while the kids are playing stick hockey, or soccer, or basketball, or something. So having the traffic down there really does create a safety hazard. And again, if you've not been in our neighborhood, the streets are just wide enough so that if you actually have cars parked on both sides, you can get one car through. You can't get two through at the same time. So in terms of creating congestion for emergency vehicles, that really is a safety concern, and we've had, I know, at least two, maybe three houses in our neighborhood burned before. So safety and ability to get a fire truck down there and to be able to navigate that cul-de-sac is really a significant safety concern of ours. So again, hopefully, we can find a permanent solution to this problem, and I hope you'll help us figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who else would like to come down? Yes, ma'am.
You guys are so polite. Usually, they're elbowing each other out of the way.
Hi. My name is Teresa Thomas. I live at 666 Old Hunt Way, so part of the cul-de-sac that -- I'm not going to reiterate everything that people have already said, but the one point that hasn't been brought up is, as you come down into that cul-de-sac, there is a sizable hill. So if people are parked on both sides of the road, you have one-way traffic, and if people are speeding up that hill, that is a lot -- that's just an accident waiting to happen. There's kids walking to bus stops. Take into account the hill that nobody's mentioned.
Okay.
The other part is, like they said, and I mean, a neighbor walking through my woods is one thing, but if it's kids that I don't know if they're going to stop in the woods, I would rather them not be in my woods because it's right next to Craig's. That's not comfortable for me. Again, thank you very much for your time, what you all have put into this, and again, looking forward to the full 100% of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Come on down.
Hi there. Stacy Kenneweg. I live at 667 Old Hunt Way, so I will be one of the remaining houses that would not be covered under the additional spots that are under consideration. So we appreciate what you've done to date and appreciate the consideration for the additional spaces, would just like to really encourage you all to apply some reasonability to the exercise. So I understand there's an ordinance, there's rules, there's a process. However, I just ask, what do we expect to gain from an additional study that we don't already know? You've heard -- I mean, you all have said it. You know what's going to happen. So, you know, just a balance of the resources that would be used. It seems very inefficient to have to go through a whole additional study to come to the conclusion that I think we all know where we're going to get. It'll just be frustrating for the remaining homeowners to have to wait the better part of the entire school year to have resolution, which hopefully we would get. But at this point, I just, I don't, you know, I'm trying to balance resources, and in the long run, what do we hope to gain from it besides check? So, thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to come forward and speak on this item? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Brenda Wickman, 925 Vine Street. I will be the outlier in the group. I'm a Herndon High School parent, not a neighbor, but I have a couple of concerns that I'd like to raise with you. First is shine a little light, maybe, I don't know if Dr. Noto did, on the order of magnitude that we're talking for Herndon High School parking constriction. In prior years, Herndon had enough permits that any senior who wanted one, any junior who wanted one, and any licensed, appropriately licensed sophomore who wanted one could buy a parking permit and park on campus. This year, the permanent spaces that Mr. Ashton spoke of that were available at the beginning of the school year were, I believe, 90. We're talking, each class in Herndon High School has in excess of 500 students in it. 90. This was a dramatic curtailment of parking. Even the temporary spaces that I believe she's talking about are, I think, 160 or so more. It's been a dramatic impact, and I think that's really what's driving students to be creative, more so than not wanting to spend the money on the permits. It's had a dramatic impact on kids who can't get to after-school jobs because they either aren't bused, or they can't get home and then out to jobs, and it has an impact on our community in kids who are involved in sports and the arts who can't physically carry everything they need to carry through the school throughout the day, or they don't have a locker. That was another impact to the construction. Not every student was assigned a locker this year. If you were not an incoming freshman, you had to be reading your email very closely and ask for a locker. So in the case of my junior, who's a dancer, she went to school today unable to carry three backpacks throughout the day because she would go from school to dance team to the studio. Luckily, my college student is home and could ferry things back and forth because my husband and I both work full-time. So this is my plea, my long way of pleading, that you do work with Dr. Noto and try and be as creative as possible to help us all out because it is quite an impact. My second and final plea is that I totally am on board with the safety concerns, and I would ask respectfully that you look again at the vine and Grace and Peachtree area when it comes to speeding for St. Joe's, and not just on school days, but on Saturday afternoons and Sundays. My husband's getting tired of me yelling at people driving, so for my sake, I respectfully ask that you do look at those issues there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this item before we close the public hearing? Okay. Thank you very much. So with that, I will -- I actually forgot to invite forward. Did -- does HOA feel that they have adequately been able to express their opinions on the subject? I was supposed to call a representative forward in the beginning, and I totally forgot. That was you? Okay. I just want to make sure that we've adequately given you your chance. Thank you. I apologize for that.
Yeah, Rob's personal email as well.
Yeah, and we all have that as well. Okay, perfect. Thank you. So if there are no other comments, I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. Vice Mayor Baker?
I move approval, ordinance 18001.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve made by the vice mayor, seconded by Council Member Cunningham. Discussion on the motion. Vice Mayor.
Sure. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for all of you to come out tonight. I know for some of you, this might be the first time in the chambers, and we're really happy to have you here. Sorry it's under these circumstances, but -- and I do appreciate that we really are working to fix this based on what the code allows. Certainly get the frustration, and I really appreciate Brenda also speaking on that there is -- this is a real impact to the students as well, so hopefully we can work together, and ideally, you know, and of course, the chief is in the room, and with limiting it...
the room, and with limiting it, and all of us being more vigilant, we can try to just model good behavior for the students as they do come in because we do recognize they're going to continue to park there. If I could ask one more question, though, of the town manager, that from what someone brought up, I'm sure we thought about this, but because of the cul-de-sac, was there any discussion on whether, instead of doing the end of the cul-de-sac, doing the different section? Can you just talk through...because the end, from the way you explain it, right, as that often the cul-de-sacs are where kids play, where stuff, people hang out, were there other potential options for that gap that we have to have? Were there any other logical options in the neighborhood?
Well, we have another, we can give you another option where, and I'm prepared to do that tonight if you want to go down that path, where we could take the cul-de-sac into account, but we're going to have to take it off the top of Old Drainsville, or off the top of Old Hunt Way. What the thought process was, was twofold. The first part of the thought process was that I could administratively park part of that, or no park part of that, and take four spaces right off the table, right off the top. And I'm still planning to do that. And then tie the zone into that so you can have a contiguous coming down Old Hunt Way, down Huntsman, take Crest out of play, and push the problem in one direction down towards the end. The second part of this was built around the thought process of cars that would be turning around in the middle of Old Hunt Way as opposed to pulling a U-turn in a cul-de-sac. That was the second element that I was thinking of. I would probably advise you not to bifurcate the problem into two spots because that's going to be harder to get a critical mass for a potential Phase III. So I was trying to push it all in one direction so it would, hate to say, manifest in one spot. We can push that manifestation towards the front of Old Hunt Way, but that would bring into account kids who can't find parking and then pulling U-turns in the middle of Old Hunt Way and doing three or four-point turnarounds and causing other issues associated with it. But if you're willing to do that, I, this afternoon, went out and eyeballed what it would take to take the 24 off the top and apply it to the bottom if that's what you so desire. And just one last piece to this, too. I'm the strange Toyota that drives up and down your neighborhood all the time. Okay? That silver Toyota that you probably reported to the police, that's me. Okay? Spend a great deal of time out in the neighborhood. Very familiar with the hill, too. Just letting you know. Again, it will be up to you if you want to switch it the other way, though.
Yeah. I just wanted at least to address that I knew it had been, I knew you thoroughly looked at all the different options and which places to highlight and to change. I'm comfortable with what has been decided or what is written in the ordinance tonight. I think based on the feedback, hopefully, everyone in the audience and in the neighborhoods understand there's not an ideal solution, and until we can resolve the entire thing, which of course is the plan and will happen as quickly as we can, I think there will be a section of the neighborhood that will be still impacted by this. I'm really glad to hear, and looking at the data, because you know I love the data, that it has at least mitigated the problem to some extent, and at least the volume. I know now there is going to be that volume in that one section, but at least the fact that the volume is much less, and as kids see that there aren't as many opportunities, you will have less kids kind of trying for those spots. And once they figure out, hey, if I'm not there by 7 o'clock, I don't get one of those spots, I think you'll start to see, ideally, less that will try for those spots once people...that's my hope. I know, maybe that's not always the way it'll work, but folks usually learn from that behavior. But, okay. So with that, I appreciate the efforts, and again, appreciate all the folks coming to give us your feedback.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I listen to this, well, certainly, I'm for the ordinance tonight, and I'll vote for this. I am a little concerned that it takes as much time of staff to look into this type of thing, and I think part of that is that the town manager and the staff is trying to stay within the constraints written into the ordinance that we passed earlier this term. I think maybe the council might want to take another look at those parameters and, based on this experience, see if they actually are the ones that we want to have continuing on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham, followed by Mr. McKenna.
Thank you. I think that we're governed by Code of Virginia on this, and we have taken up all the parking that the Code of Virginia will allow us to. However, it's one of those things where when you roll over and somebody yank the covers off somebody else, and they roll over and they yank the covers back and over them, that's what's going to happen. Either we take the 24 spots and we leave you guys uncovered at the bottom of the cul-de-sac, or we take the 24 spots at the top. So somebody's right now going to be not covered by a blanket. I would urge you, as soon as you see students starting to park in the 24 uncovered spaces, to come back to us post-haste with a petition and ask us to...
The petition still stands. They don't need it. Don't panic.
To reevaluate the study for the remaining 24 spaces so we can start that process. We are bound by law, unfortunately, for the number of spaces we can take, even though we know what's going to happen. So please, please be vigilant and come to us as soon as you see an issue. We do want to make sure that the whole neighborhood is safe. We've marched in that Fourth of July parade, and we know that it's a long march down the hill, a long march back up the hill, and the cul-de-sac is really where the neighborhood heart is. And so I'm concerned that, not so much in the wintertime when it's 3 degrees out, but as the weather gets nicer, people will want to be out, and neighbors will want to be out, and kids will want to be playing there. So please do come back to us as soon as you see an issue, and we will go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna.
I just want to say, I really appreciate not only the staff and the police's effort, but also the residents here this evening. I can certainly understand your concern about allocation of resources. That's a violation of Cato Paribus Assumption Number Three in economics, so I actually paid attention in that class, so, Dr. Nair, thank you. I did want to say, too, I have a unique perspective on this because I was actually a councilman in New Jersey, which is a home role state versus a Dillon role state. I won't put you to sleep with the devil in the details, but we are bound by, as Ms. Cunningham said, by rules and regulations of the state of Virginia and specifically VDOT ordinances. And if you've ever been to the DMV, you know how VDOT can be. So we're going through this methodically. The first go-around, obviously, this is an osmosis, and as things change, we're trying to adapt according to what's needed. So please know that as much as we don't want to go through this process, we'd like to get it done, you know, ex post facto. Unfortunately, we have to go through this, so just know that this is another step in the process, and hopefully, as time goes on, the school system, again, a different part of the government that we're not attached to, but we have to work with trying to come together and make everything work. So I'm for this ordinance, but please know we're going to keep unplugging so we can make sure everything's done. Thanks.
Thank you. And Ms. Friedrichs.
So when we were talking about different options, and you discussed moving the, as council member Cunningham said, moving the blanket up or down, another, and I apologize for not asking this in the work session, but I didn't realize that the cul-de-sac was an issue. Is there any...so one of, this is directed to you, Mr. Ashton, is there any way to park on one side of, in other words, you can administratively put 24 spaces?
What I can administratively do is no park an area. It's either a binary on or off. I can't put a residential zone in. I mean, that's restricted by code, and by code, that means by law. I can only do what's prescribed to me under the law. And that's, so the residential permit program went through the process prescribed under the law...
Right.
...to the maximum amount the data would allow us to go, as prescribed under the law. But I just, I looked at the entrance up at Drainsville, coming into the neighborhood and exiting the neighborhood, and said, you know what, if cars parked along here, that would be a dramatic safety impact to this neighborhood. So I'm going to administratively no park an area up in there to tie Drainsville into where I propose the zone to be so that we could take it from Drainsville all the way down to just short of the cul-de-sac, which is 24 spaces. Well, not just short, it's like four houses up from the cul-de-sac. So it's 24 spaces down there are the only ones remaining.
Okay. And we've no parked, or we're proposing to no park both sides of the street in the rest of the area that we're no parking.
I'm going to propose no parking from Drainsville along the Montessori frontage down to the Montessori driveway. I'm proposing no parking from Drainsville on the south side of Old Hunt Way down to the first house where the zone would then pick up and take you all the way down to where I proposed it to end, and that would include 82 spaces not currently in the zone, which is the maximum allowable under the law.
So how is it that you can administratively no park an area, but not administratively no park the rest of the area? And I apologize, I realize this is something I should know, but...
It's in the code. It's what I'm allowed under the code to do.
So if it's a safety hazard...
It looks like the town attorney is trying to grab the microphone, so I'll let the town attorney chime in.
Madam Town Attorney.
I think you were going the right place.
Okay.
It is making conclusions about safety based upon VDOT standards, essentially, for safety. Apparently, the manager believes that he and his staff can't make them, or they probably have tried to make them in other places, and can't make those same conclusions. So he cannot just say, oh...
So he can't do that with the cul-de-sac part of the...
But, but, sure, we can make an argument to that effect, but again, but to no park it is, you are no parking it. Your visitors can't park there, nobody can park there. It is no parked. It's a binary question, on or off, is what I'm allowed to do based on safety considerations.
Okay. All right.
So even with the permit, people can't park in an administratively no park area?
They would get to know our new parking enforcement official very well.
I hear he's a nice guy.
Although he's very popular in town right now, he would probably be not so popular.
But they would still be able to park in their driveways. I just...
That's true.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Did everyone get to speak?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I know this is frustrating. We're frustrated, too. I know we're not living with it every day like some of you are, but it is frustrating to know that we're going to have to be back here, but I can assure you that the town manager will be on it as quickly as possible, and we'll get it done. The good news is, we have a really great relationship with Dr. Noto and the staff over at Herndon High School, and with Supervisor John Faust, who the town manager and I have a meeting with later this week, and I'll add it to our agenda to ask what's going on with the drainage, and if there's anything that he or anyone might be able to do to make sure we get, push them to get that done as quickly as possible. It is frustrating to have to go through this process, and you guys have been so overly kind, and, because I know it's frustrating, and you're dealing with it every day, looking out your window while you're trying to work from home, and, you know, these are inexperienced drivers on top of just the issues that this would be if you lived near a metro station and people were parking there. So the good news is, a speeding ticket's really expensive to a high school student, so that may help solve that problem if some of those are out there. I know HPD is mindful of this. We really appreciate you coming out. I felt, I actually responded to a couple of emails and said, I'm pretty sure that the council supports this, and I never predict what the council will say, but this is such a no-brainer that I do appreciate you taking the time to come out and know that we have heard you, and we will be as expeditious as possible to get this done. And it's not the right time to ask a question, but do we know when the signs will go up, if this is passed this evening?
I will need to confer with staff.
At 8:30 tonight? No, I'm kidding. No?
I'm not, we don't have them in stock yet, so we're working on that. So passes tonight, we'll get the signs in stock. We still have to, we have requirements to notify the neighbors so they can apply for the visitors' permits and their permits, and we've got to go through all that process while we're ordering the signs. So it's going to take probably four to six weeks to implement, I would say, to make all the necessary notifications. I'm not sure what it was the first time. And then we're going to put the signs out, and we'll do the same thing as we do, I'm sure we did the last time. We'll wait for a week or two to begin enforcement.
Okay. All right. I'll talk to you about that before.
And I can assure you, the day after enforcement begins, you'll see the silver Toyota driving up and down your street again every morning.
You're on speed dial, they'll be calling you.
Yeah, I'm sure.
At least you don't, at least now you know who the strange car is in your neighborhood, so win-win. Okay. Again, thank you. Let's get this vote done so we can get this process going. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and that motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for coming, and our feelings aren't hurt if you bolt right now, unless you really want to hear about sanitary water and sewer. It's my favorite topic. Our next public hearing is ordinance 18002 to amend Chapter 74 Utilities to increase the usage charges for sanitary sewer and water. I'll open the public hearing call on Janine Tripoli for the staff report.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to try to pull up the presentation here. It's a...get rid of that. Full screen. There we go. I would like to just tee this up for everyone and introduce Kyle Lauks with Davenport and Company, our financial advisors. Davenport in conjunction with MSFG, who was the, on the engineering side, the rates consultants worked together to help the town put together a multi-year financial plan for the Water and Sewer Fund. And without further ado, I will turn the microphone over to Kyle.
All right. Madam Mayor, members of council, nice to see everybody this evening. We've got a presentation here that we'll walk through. We won't go word by word. I know you've seen some of this, but we certainly want to make sure that the public, by virtue of the TV and everything, has a benefit of this. So with that said, excited to be here, again, with Davenport out of Richmond, the town's financial advisor. So if I can make this thing work, we'll go to the first slide. A little bit of background, as you all know, and we've talked about, the town has a water and sewer utility system of its own. That is a system that is accounted for and operated separate from the general fund and sort of the general operations of the town, and that's the best practice in the world of utilities in the municipal realm, and something we're going to continue as we work through this plan financially that we'll talk about. As you're well aware, you are anticipating substantial growth in the town and the area by virtue of the Silver Line and the things that are going on, so that has been factored into the planning. You're going to need to invest in terms of the capital and the capacity to make some of that growth happen, as well as to maintain the system in the best possible manner. So what we've done, ourselves at Davenport, working with the folks at MSFG, and obviously closely with staff and in meetings with you, is to put together a, really a multi-year plan. And the idea here is that we set in place something that the town may not have had necessarily in the past, and that is really a multi-year look forward where the utility system is headed. So you'll see that in here. We'll talk about that. It's certainly a best practice from a sort of utility standpoint to be thinking not just about the next year, but future years, and so you'll see that as we work through the planning. A couple of goals and objectives, just relatively quickly. We want to make sure the water and sewer system remains self-supporting, that is, it is paid for by the users that are using the system, that being that water and sewer, through their taps and their faucets, et cetera. We want to limit the need to use, raise the user rates. Obviously, it's not always a popular thing to do. It's a necessary thing to do in today's world. You know, expenses just kind of, they creep up over time between regulatory needs, inflation, et cetera. But we obviously want to be mindful of making sure Herndon's competitive, and users aren't paying any more than they need to, so that concept is built in, built into the planning. Third here, you've got a lot of growth that is talked about, it isn't necessarily here yet, so we want to test sort of the financial plan under a variety of different assumptions, that meaning what happens if the growth comes at kind of full bore, what happens if it comes slower, and make sure that our plan sort of withstands some of that potential variability. Lastly, we've recommended to you that you adopt some financial policies that would sort of memorialize some of the practices financially, that'll make sure the water and sewer system is indeed financially sound going forward. So page three, a couple of quick observations. These basically tell us, without going word by word, that you start today with a water and sewer system that is in good shape financially. and sewer system that is in good shape financially. You have almost no debt outstanding, you have very high cash levels, your typical quarterly bill is currently the lowest in the region, and so as a starting point, you start in a very good position. I think you'll see that as we talk about, and we have talked about some of the projections. We wanna make sure that we continue some of those practices, we wanna keep your rates competitive, we wanna make sure we've got enough reserves in terms of the cash levels, and be prudent about how and when we take on debt to fund these various capital improvements. But basically, what this page is telling you in terms of observations is you start with a financially solid, financially strong utility system. With that, just a couple of other quick observations. The growth you are expecting, the timing of it's unknown. Nobody really knows exactly how that's gonna happen, what phasing will happen, the ultimate magnitude of it. So again, we're gonna test that under a variety of different assumptions, we've done that through the numbers you've seen thus far, and the result is that the plan, you'll see in the next couple of pages, kind of stands up to some of that what we call stress testing of the numbers as we work through those analyses. Again, in terms of system growth, what we're showing here on page five are not numbers that were created by us per se, meaning at Davenport, but were given to us, but what this is really showing is the expectations for future growth in Herndon's utility system over what is basically the next ten years, again, as it was supplied to us. And what that shows is a total increase of about twenty percent in terms of the connections to the water and sewer system. Ultimately, the magnitude of that, you're not gonna know until it happens, it's gonna depend upon a lot of decisions that you make, depend upon the economy, what the developers wanna do. So I think as we look at this, we see substantial growth, but certainly uncertainty in terms of when that's gonna happen. So again, we wanna be cautious of that, we wanna be watching this, meaning the plan on a year-to-year basis, that's something we'd recommend to you and have recommended in your financial policies, is that while we're putting in place a five-year plan, we go back and look at this annually to test and see how do those assumptions hold up, whether it be revenues, whether it be new connections, et cetera, and getting that sort of practice of looking again annually in a multi-year period to see how the projections hold up. So that really leads to page six, which we called summary results, which is simply, where do we see the typical bill for residential customer in Herndon going over the next five years? You'll see on the next slide that you start at the lowest point in the region, meaning you have the lowest water and sewer rates in the region. And what we really see for 2018, meaning the balance of this fiscal year, which for the next six months, would be a five percent increase in terms of the total quarterly bill, that's gonna equate to a little over two dollars a month, if you're thinking about that in terms of monthly expenses. And then, between FY nineteen, FY twenty, five percent, five percent, and then really trailing down to three percent, which when you get out those three percent years, that's really just keeping pace with inflation. So there's an inflationary factor built into the overall expenditures here, trying to err on the side of caution, and that's really what you see in those out years. So if you're thinking about a typical bill for residential customers, it's going up a little over two dollars a month, again, to make way for what should be substantial growth, but also making sure that the operation of the system continues to be self-supporting. Rates haven't been raised for six years, certainly things have gotten more expensive over that time period, there's a little bit of a catch-up in some of this too, in terms of making sure we're up to speed and on par with where things are today relative to where they were six years ago. This maybe is the most important slide in the presentation, and that's a comparison of view versus the vast majority of your neighbors in the Northern Virginia region, many of which we work with. And this is basically looking at a quarterly bill for a whole slew of your neighbors, if you take your eye to the very bottom of the page, your rates, as I've mentioned a couple times, are currently the lowest in the region. And I think as you look at this, the second bar from the bottom is still your rates. So even after you increase rates, that first increment, you'd be projected to have the lowest rates in the Northern Virginia region. And furthermore, as you look out at the end of the five-year period, so it's after you've done a couple, you know, various rate adjustments to set the stage for your sort of development investment, your combined quarterly bill is still basically amongst the lowest in the region. So you look at that Loudon Waters current rates, we'd typically be just a hair below what your rates would be in five years. The reality is, all of these different entities are looking at their water and sewer rates every single year, just like you're going to be. So, the expectation over time is that whether it's Loudon Water, Vienna Warrant, and all these entities are going to be looking at rate increases most likely over the next five years as well, so the entire chart is gonna kind of shift out. As inflation happens, as regulatory requirements happen, as things break that you have to fix, that's just kind of a fact of life. So, again, you have very competitive rates, you'll continue to have very competitive rates in the region, and you're just doing the things that are required to make sure you've got a financially strong system, one you continue to invest in, to make sure it stays both, I think from a functional standpoint, as good shape as it can be, but also from a financial standpoint, in as good shape as it can be. With that, I'll pause and see if there's any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Nope. Nope? Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I know you're not quite done yet, but I just wanted to come up and reiterate a couple of things, to potentially head off any questions as well, but, again, one of the three things that we really wanna emphasize to everyone is that we are the lowest in the region, we anticipate staying the lowest in the region, we are in great financial shape, but it's eroding a bit because we have been realizing operating losses over the last several fiscal years, and that obviously can't continue, you know, and as the utility grows, of course, there will be more maintenance costs with that, that's usage fees, so we have to be planning for that now. And finally, just to Kyle's point again, is we are putting in place a process, that is, a process that the top-rated utilities already have, which is a plan to look at rates every year and to have a multi-year plan, instead of having to come back every so often and say, "Oh hey, surprise, we need to raise rates." So we wanna normalize it as much as possible as a best practice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, with that, Madam Mayor, we just have a couple of next steps here, I think you're well aware of these, and that's basically, you would be adopting these rates now, likely as we work through the budget process through the spring, then be thinking about sort of the next phase of that for the next fiscal year. And also, we'll be working with staff, obviously, very closely on sort of the plan of finance for your overall sort of capital needs, and that would be one of our next steps per se. We'll obviously work closely with town manager and finance director, so with that, happy to take, any other questions? And appreciate it.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions that have arisen before we move to public comment? No? Thank you very much for coming out once again, and thank you to you, Jenny, we appreciate the very thorough explanation of it, so I appreciate it. This is a public hearing, so I will call for comments from the audience. Is there anyone here that would like to come forward and speak on this ordinance regarding water and sewer rates? Okay, seeing none, I will close public hearing, move to council level for discussion and action, and this does require a roll call vote, I meant to give you guys a heads up on that earlier. Yes, sir?
Once again, I just wanna thank...
Is there a motion?
Oh, sorry, I'll make a motion on ordinance eighteen dash zero oh dash oh two to amend Chapter seventy-four of the utilities articles.
To approve.
To approve, yes.
Perfect, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion to approve made by Mr. McKenna, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Mr. McKenna?
Just wanna thank staff at Davenport once again for this work, because it's extremely important. I don't know, we have, we're talking about the rates here, water rates, and they're going up a little bit, and, you know, we're now neck and neck for the bottom with Loudon, but Florida's taking Georgia right now to court over water rights. That's how bad some parts of the country are right now. The water, the Colorado River is under attack from other states because of water rights there as well, and we're, you know, that's why, just keeping things in perspective and understanding where we have to be, I think being proactive on these things, coupled with things that may come along with the federal government over the next few years in regards to capacity and things like that, I think are extremely important. So, bravo, I'd rather, you know, pay a little bit now than pay a lot later, so this is a great, great step. So thank you very much, being proactive.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Sure, yeah, I just wanna reiterate that, 'cause I think we're, so thank you to Jenny for leading the charge on this, because, yeah, water is a really precious resource, right, and I think we take that for granted, and I'm thrilled we can still keep our rates as low as they're going to be, and the lowest in the region. I'm very, I was unpopular in the work session when I talked about, I think it should actually be higher, 'cause it is such an important infrastructure, but I know that's not popular, so I am thrilled that for our citizens and for folks to make sure it is still an attractive place to live, that we do wanna be competitive, but I appreciate that we're gonna be looking at this, and certainly, we're ahead of it, 'cause the other jurisdictions are doing the same. So, thank you again for your leadership on that.
Thank you. Other comments? Nope. Nope? Well, I'll just close by saying, this is my favorite slide. I think that we, I think we should be really loud about this, because I'm actually really shocked that no one's here to express concern about raising of rates, because that's a very natural thing to come and be concerned about. So I'm surprised that no one's here, but I think we should really make sure we emphasize that we're still on the low end of rates and providing great service. And I totally agree with you about looking at this as a normal process, it helps, you know, our residents, if they know it's kind of a normal thing, that it might inch up a little bit, it helps them in budget planning, it helps us in budget planning, it just makes sense, so I totally support that, and I'll look forward to seeing where that takes us. And thank you again for making the trip out a whole lot of times, we hope you've had fun. We try to keep it light around here, so thanks for coming. And if there are no other comments, I will call the question, which does require a roll call vote, so I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Davidson?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
And Mayor Merkel?
Yes, that motion carries. Thank you very much. And you can bolt out too, our feelings won't be hurt, we're used to it, it's all good. We have one final public hearing this evening, which is a resolution, it's eighteen G zero one to consider a special exception, number seventeen zero seven, to operate a retail business within an office suite at ten thirty-seven Sterling Road, Suite one zero one. I'll open the public hearing and call Lisa Gillarone for the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, my name is Lisa Gillarone, Director of Community Development. We have this evening a special exception application for ten thirty-seven Sterling Road, Suite one oh one. The applicant is Tewotko Gabrielle McCall, and this particular special exception is to open a mini-mart within an office suite. The location of the proposed use is in ten thirty-seven, which is located behind the Mellow Mushroom, and next to the shopping center. The property is Zone CO, which is commercial office. The intent of the commercial office zoning district is to provide development opportunities for office uses that are principally used during daylight hours, and that may serve as a transition between residential and retail, commercial and service commercial uses. So this is an office district that was originally designed for office uses, relatively quiet office uses, to form a transition between the retail-type environment that you see along Eldon Street and in other places in town, and our residential uses. The staff does have some concerns with this application, and because of that, the staff is recommending denial. The staff's concerns are that there are a few of the special exception criteria or standards that special exceptions are to be judged against, that we do not believe meet or are in line with what is being proposed with the special exception. The three standards that we're concerned about is that special exceptions need to not adversely affect the health and safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the proposed use, they need to be consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning district in which they are located, or will improve compatibility among uses, and will ensure efficient development within the town, and they need to contribute to a logical and orderly development pattern, consistent with accepted or emerging planning practices. And the reason that we're concerned about these, this particular application not meeting these standards, is that there are some issues with traffic and the roadway, or really drive aisle layout, and the parking layout within this particular office park, where the roadways, the private roadways through the office park, are also the parking space areas. It's having direct backing into the drive aisles, and it is an area that has some conflicting movements, and it also has some cut-through traffic, and can be quite busy at certain times of the day, although quite quiet at other times. We're concerned about whether or not this use is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning district, as I just read to you, the purpose and intent is really for those office uses, and definitely not for the retail uses. It's actually supposed to be creating a buffer between retail-type uses and residential We're also concerned regarding the question of whether or not this use would contribute to a logical and orderly development pattern, consistent with accepted or emerging planning practices, in that what we're seeing this evening is, we're seeing a use, in this case, a mini-mart, that is proposing to locate in one room within an office suite, where there is already another business. The other business is a travel agency. So what we're seeing here is the carving up, although there's not, to the best of staff's knowledge, any physical change, but a carving up of the space into unassociated or unrelated uses. Now, we have seen this in some other locations in town, and it's usually not a positive step in the, in the business environment that you have in a particular location. And with this particular use being in a suite with another use in an office park, you're also going to have some additional issues such as signage. Each of the suites receives one wall sign in this particular office park, and there are definite limitations on the window signs, in part due to the architectural design of the buildings, which are townhouse, condo, office-style buildings. So, the incorporation of retail uses into the office suites here poses a problem for signage and recognition of the business, and again, that is a feature that is important to development patterns, and it is, it would be an issue with this particular use. The planning commission recommended denial. There was one planning commissioner though who voted against that, and who was willing to support this as an accessory use. Now, the staff believes that there may be some uses that could co-locate with a different business if there was an actual connection between the use, even a special exception use, and the existing business. But from staff's understanding, this is general retail merchandise, mini-mart type of products, and it is not tied to, and directly related to, the nature of the other business that is occurring in the suite. Now, during the work session, we mentioned that there is, within the office park, two particular parcels, I'll call them, that are actually Zone CS instead of CO. And if you look at the plan before you, you can see where, at the time of rezoning, when this office park was being developed, the rezoning actually, for the Mellow Mushroom site, and for one unit, or I guess it would be two units, one of the townhouses, they made those CS, which is a retail district. It's the same retail-style district that you have for the shopping center next door. And staff believes that the reason for that, the reason this area was carved out, was probably twofold. One, because of its direct location onto Eldon Street, so these two particular buildings actually have visibility from Eldon Street, which is more of a retail strip type of development. And two, because they could provide some services to the offices that are located in the office park, that is Zone CO. So you could have a small retail establishment in this particular townhouse, office townhouse, and in fact, over the years... and in fact, over the years, there have been different types of retail and service establishments located there, and you could have a restaurant on-site, which at this point is the Mellow Mushroom. But the remainder of the site did, did rezone to a CO, which is the office district. Now, staff has provided you with a resolution this time that does afford you the option of approving or denying with language to assist you in doing that. If you were to choose to approve this particular special exception, the staff has also recommended some conditions that staff believes should be included with any approval. Those conditions are that the retail business shall be limited to the area depicted on the site layout, submitted as part of the application, and shall not exceed 144 square feet. The retail business shall not operate earlier than 6:00 a.m. or later than 10:00 p.m. Illuminated window signs shall not be permitted except for those allowed by right. All other signs shall meet the applicable provisions within the town code. And this special exception shall run with the land and shall not be transferable to other property inside or outside the Crossroad of Dulles Office Development or to additional square footage within the unit. The resolution, the draft resolution dated January 9th, if you were to choose approval, does reference those conditions. Those are the conditions in the staff report, so there is reference to that. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Gilloran? Any questions? Nope. Everybody's thinking? Okay. Thank you. So this is a public hearing, so I will call on comments from the audience, but I do believe the applicant or applicant's agent is here. If you would like to come forward and address the council, you may, or you don't have to if you would not like to, but you get the first opportunity. Would you like to come forward? Okay. All right, thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience here to speak on this special exception that we're entertaining this evening? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. And just to remind the council, there is language to deny or approve in the resolution, so make sure that your motion is stated accordingly. It's different from how they're usually stated. Is there a motion on the issue? Mr. McKenna?
I make a motion to deny special exception application SE number 17-07.
Second.
Okay, thank you. There is a motion on the floor to deny the special exception based upon the finding that the proposed use is adverse to the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, in particular section 78-155.3. Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, as much as I'd like to move forward, because I do believe business is important in town, based on the findings of the planning board, also of the staff, the questions that they asked, I was actually at, I watched the meeting and a lot of the, and also the work session, just a lot of the questions that were asked, just concerned about the usage and also traffic and things of that nature. Again, I, I want everything to succeed, but I don't think that this would be an apropos thing for this particular location, maybe someplace else in town, but unfortunately, I don't feel that this is the proper place, just based upon the footage, and that's why I'm denying the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? I'm sorry, that was you. Second, Grace.
Echoing Councilmember McKenna's remarks, would love to see more businesses in Herndon, but that particular location, not only is that an office park where most people come and go by appointment only, so the traffic flow is a little bit more predictable and orderly than retail establishments where people come and go at will, that particular location is located right around where people will come in from the grocery store and make that left to cut out if they don't want to make the left, because they can't make the left coming out of the fresh rail parking lot. So in addition to it being problematic for that shopping center, that particular location is probably the worst location for something that, of that nature, just from a traffic safety perspective. I do hope that the business is able to find alternate space here in the town of Herndon. We would love to see them flourish.
Thank you. Other comments on the motion? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I appreciate the request, and certainly, we did have a lot of discussion on this at the work session. I'm not sure if you guys were at the work session or not, but ultimately, I mean, this is zoned CO, and as the previous council members have stated, based on the traffic implications, because that's really what we have to look at, and whether we can viably make an exception, and based on the Planning Commission, our discussion, and the staff, really, kind of all the cards were kind of stacked against it. And I just want you to know that's where the decision came from. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Davidson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In addition to all the reasons that we've heard, I guess my reason for doing this would be that there is appropriately zoned property in the immediate vicinity of this particular location that would be much better for the retail purpose. And that's an additional reason. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Friedrichs?
I do believe that small businesses are the heart of what we want to help develop in this area, but for the reasons that are outlined very capably by our staff, I think it's an inappropriate use in this, in this case. I'm sorry to say.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I concur with my colleagues. It's really unusual for the Planning Commission to come down toward a denial. I know if there was any way to work and make this a workable situation, I think that the staff and the Planning Commission would have tried to do that. So it's with a heavy heart that I support denying this as well, and I hope that there is some other good use that you can have for that space in your building, because we certainly want you to be successful and value that you've chosen Herndon for your original business, and hope that you'll continue to work with us over time. So if there is no further discussion, the motion on the floor is to deny special exception application SE 1707, made by Councilmember McKenna, seconded by Councilmember Cunningham. And this does not require a roll call vote, so I will call the question on the motion. All those in favors of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries as well. That leaves us with the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that brings us to the end of our agenda this evening, and there's no Ms. Olem, so go for it, guys.
Madam Mayor, seeing no further business, I move we adjourn.
I second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Well done, Vice Mayor.
I thought you had a comment. I was like, whoa, wait a minute. We stand adjourned at 8:17 p.m. Thank you all.